Buenas tardes. Esta es una reunión especial del Comité de Derechos Humanos, Desarrollo Equitable y Derechos de Rentas del Consejo de Ciudad de Seattle. La fecha es 5:17 PM el jueves 17 de octubre. Y estamos en las chambres del Consejo de Ciudad. Por desgracia no estoy unido por ningún otro miembro del Consejo. Y digo que es muy desafortunado porque todo el día de hoy los miembros del Consejo estaban exagerando sobre el presupuesto, sobre cuán compasivos son hacia las personas sin hogar. Pero ahora que tenemos la oportunidad de escuchar directamente a nuestros vecinos sin hogar y defensores sin hogar sobre un programa terrificante y exitoso, desafortunadamente estoy aquí solo. Espero que los miembros del Consejo sigan camino para unirse a mí, pero no sé si lo harán. Siento feliz que el miembro O'Brien, quien envió sus disculpas, que no iba a poder estar aquí, nos envió algunas remarques sobre lo que él piensa sobre los Villas de Tamales, que quiero leer ahora mismo. Esta es de miembro O'Brien. Desde que pasamos la legislación en 2015 para permitir permisos de uso interminable para encampamientos sancionados, encontramos que esto es un instrumento invaluable para abordar la crisis sin hogar en la que estamos. No solo necesitamos hacer que esta legislación permanente, necesitamos expandir las oportunidades para satisfacer la necesidad. Gracias a miembro Sawant por su liderazgo en esto. Esa es la declaración del miembro O'Brien. Gracias a él por eso. Y continuaremos con la audiencia pública como estamos. La reunión de hoy tiene un punto en la agenda, esta audiencia pública sobre la legislación que mi oficina ha presentado para expandir las opciones para las Villas de Tamales en toda la ciudad. Como hemos discutido en las reuniones anteriores que he dirigido en el 24 de mayo y el 10 de septiembre de este año, las Villas de Tamales en Seattle han sido, tal vez, el más fuerte apoyo para las personas enfrentando la ausencia de hogar. proporcionan cosas esenciales para los seres humanos: dignidad, privacidad, seguridad, un lugar para almacenar tus bienes. Muchas villas tienen automanejamiento donde los residentes están empoderados a administrar democráticamente sus propias comunidades y todas las villas están proporcionadas con servicios esenciales como gestión de casos. Incluso basándose en la métrica del Departamento de Servicios Humanos de la Ciudad de Seattle, que está rastreando las transiciones hacia la vivienda permanente, lo cual no pensamos que es el indicador más útil para todos los servicios sin hogar, pero ir por esa medida, que al final es el indicador más importante, ya sabes, si pudiste moverte a vivienda. Por esa medida, las Villas de Tamales de Seattle son mucho más exitosas que incluso los refugios mejorados. Y mientras tenemos que seguir asegurándonos de defender la vivienda accesible pagando impuestos a los grandes negocios y, ya sabes, constantemente estresamos que las Villas de Tamales no son un sustituto para la vivienda accesible, para la vivienda real, creemos que han demostrado ser un mecanismo efectivo, exitoso y humano para ayudar a las personas sin hogar, primero que nada, no estar en las calles, no enfrentarse a la violencia y los elementos, y encontrar un camino hacia la vivienda de una manera que ningún otro programa ha logrado. También, además de luchar por financiar las Villas de Tamales para vivienda social pagando impuestos a los grandes negocios, también necesitamos control de la renta para que las personas tengan opciones reales para mantener la estabilidad de la vivienda. Mucha gente, cuando hablas con ellos, ¿por qué te convirtiste en homeless? ¿Cómo fue el punto de partida? O uno de los muchos, ya sabes, una de las combinaciones de puntos de partida, ¿por qué te convirtiste en homeless? A menudo tiene que ver con el hecho de que tu renta se volvió insostenible. Y así no podemos ser defensores de las Villas de Tamales sin también ser defensores de expandir las ganancias progresivas pagando impuestos a los grandes negocios para financiar la vivienda social y también defendiendo el control de la renta. Y en este contexto, quiero compartir que estamos muy felices de reportar que el Distrito Legislativo 43 del Partido Demócrata, Partido Demócrata Estatal, ha unidisciplinariamente apoyado el control de la renta sin huecos. Simplemente... Este es un desarrollo muy, muy importante. Simplemente, incluso antes del 43, el Distrito Legislativo 32 del Partido Demócrata Estatal ganó, creo, una resolución unidisciplinar. Y en realidad, algunos de los activistas de la red de la Partida Demócrata que defendieron esto están aquí, Barbara Finney y su pariente Brent McFarlane, así que todos deben agradecerlos. Estos dos distritos legislativos ahora traen a 25 el número de organizaciones, comunidades y organizaciones laborales que han pasado resoluciones en favor del control de la renta. Sin embargo, mientras que la ausencia de hogar existe, no hay razón por la que las personas deberían quedarse en las calles sin lugar a ir. Las Villas de Tamales pueden ser construidas rápidamente y sin costo. Y siempre que tengamos una crisis de ausencia de hogar, debe haber tamales disponibles para todos los que no tienen lugar mejor a ir. Por eso es muy importante y estoy contento de que estemos teniendo esta audiencia sobre el proyecto que hemos presentado, que expandirá las opciones para construir Villas de Tamales en Seattle. En particular, pasar este proyecto permitirá a las villas como Georgetown y Norte Lake continuar renovando sus permisos mientras se justifica en términos de cómo bien funciona la villa y que haya un fuerte apoyo comunitario para ello. Permitirá a los 40 villas de Seattle utilizando este tipo de permiso, eliminar restricciones arbitrarias sobre las localizaciones de las villas y muchos otros pequeños cambios para aumentar las oportunidades de construir Villas de Tamales en Seattle. Así que esta legislación será importante. Sin embargo, no será suficiente por sí sola. También tendremos que luchar por el financiamiento para expandir las Villas de Tamales en el presupuesto. Y en el movimiento presupuestario de la población para 2019, hemos presentado legislación para financiar, no solo el sitio, sino financiar 20 más Villas de Tamales en Seattle. ¿Estamos de acuerdo con eso? Y necesitamos abordar los derechos humanos y demócratas de las personas sin hogar cuando permanecen en las Villas de Tamales y refugios de Tamales de Seattle. Esos problemas son importantes y deben discutirse. Y no tengo objeción a los miembros de la población presentando esos puntos en la audiencia pública, aunque no sean directamente parte de la legislación. Pero realmente quiero, yo强烈encorajeos a ustedes también a hablar sobre por qué apoyan la legislación que expandirá la capacidad de localizar Villas de Tamales en toda la ciudad y por qué apoyan fondos adicionales en el presupuesto para financiar la expansión de las Villas de Tamales, porque sus testimonios van a llegar a los miembros del consejo, incluso si no están aquí, sus testimonios son extremadamente importantes porque esa es la base para que construyamos esta coalición de voces. Así que por favor, asegúrense de defender, ya sabes, decir lo que piensan sobre el proyecto y el financiamiento para expandir las Villas de Tamales. Antes de empezar la audiencia pública, me gustaría mencionar los siguientes pasos para la legislación después de la audiencia de hoy. Esta legislación cuenta como legislación de uso de tierra, lo que significa que la ciudad fue requerida para completar una análisis ambiental llamado SEPA. Y el SEPA tiene sus propios requisitos legales, incluyendo un proceso de apelio que necesita ser completado antes del Consejo poder votar sobre la legislación. El análisis SEPA fue apelado por Elizabeth Campbell, quien también mantuvo el proyecto de vivienda accesible en Fort Lawton. Así que ese apelio fue a la examinadora de audiencias para una agenda de audiencia para diciembre. Sin embargo, los abogados de la ciudad han presentado un resumen de juicio y si son exitosos, podríamos, en el mejor escenario, no sé si esto llegará a la creación, pero en el mejor escenario, podríamos poder votar en esto tan pronto como en noviembre. Si los abogados de la ciudad no son exitosos en ese esfuerzo, entonces todavía podremos poder votar en esta legislación, pero estará atrasada hasta que el examinador de audiencias apruebe el análisis SEPA de la ciudad, realizado a través del trabajo duro del personal central del Consejo, a quien agradecemos. Pero realisticamente, si se lleva a este paso, eso no pasaría hasta principios de año próximo. Mi oficina continuará manteniendo información a la publica sobre el progreso de ese apelio SEPA y cuando la legislación se vuelva disponible para un voto en el Consejo, por supuesto, informaré a todos los miembros de la población. Ahora comenzaremos la audiencia pública. Esta audiencia pública es parte de los procedimientos legalmente requeridos para legislación de uso de tierra como esta, como esta. Todos los que quieran hablar tendrán dos minutos. Por favor, no pasen por alto para que podamos asegurarnos de salir de aquí de manera temprana porque sé que todos tienen otras cosas por hacer en sus vidas personales. Ted llamará nombres y cuando escuche, perdón, voy a llamar nombres en realidad, y cuando escuche su nombre, por favor, coloquen detrás del micrófono para que no pierdan tiempo entre los oradores esperando a que las personas entran y salgan de sus asientos. Y antes de que le llame varios nombres de una vez, Ted, ¿le leerá la legislación al registro?
Proyecto Consejo 119656, ordenanza relativa al uso de tierra y la zonación, garantizando que los encampamientos transitorios para individuos sin hogar sean permitidos en cualquier propiedad poseída o controlada por una organización religiosa sin la aprobación de un permiso bajo el Código de Uso de Tierra de Seattle, para permitir los encampamientos transitorios para individuos sin hogar como uso interminable en toda propiedad públicamente poseída o privada dentro de la ciudad de Seattle y garantizando el renovado permiso temporal de uso para los encampamientos transitorios como decisión de tipo 1 del director del Departamento de Construcción y Inspección de Seattle, modificando secciones 23.40.002, 23.42.054, 23.42.056, 23.76.004, 23.76.032 y 23.84A.038.
Ted realmente suena como un auctioneer.
Y modificando ordenanza 124747.
Gracias por eso, Ted. Antes de que le llame los nombres, quería leer una cosa que pensé que era muy impactante. Sabes, he estado en, a través de cinco procesos presupuestarios, ya sabes, no incluyendo este año, y cada año el Consejo de Ciudad va a la misma discusión de, oh, ¿tenemos suficientes datos? Hay ambigüedad, ¿funcionan los recortes o no? Tal vez funcionan, tal vez no. No, no, sabemos que los recortes no funcionan. Y uno de los, bueno, esto no es evidencia estadística, pero esto es fuerte evidencia anecdotal, que es que, esto es algo que he traído cada año tras año, que es que hay, quiero decir, he hablado con tantos miembros de la comunidad sin hogar y defensores, nunca alguien ha dicho, "Yo era sin hogar y siendo recortado, ya sabes, ser parte de un recorte sin hogar me ayudó a entrar en la vivienda permanente". Que ser parte de un recorte aumentó mi moral, me ayudó a ganar mi dignidad. No estoy siendo facetista, la razón por la que digo esto es contrastar cero instancias de personas sin hogar diciendo que un recorte me ayudó, a innumerables instancias donde la gente ha dicho que este o ese programa les ayudó. Sabes, hay muchos, muchos, muchos programas útiles que han ayudado a las personas porque, ya sabes, no es un problema de uno para todos, la gente tiene necesidades diferentes. Y lo mismo se aplica a las Villas de Tamales. El número de personas que hemos oído hablar sobre cómo esto ha sido realmente una vía vital para ellos es simplemente tremendo, el número de personas es tremendo. Solo quiero leer uno de esos correos electrónicos de una residente, Deborah Foster, que dice, "Las Villas de Tamales salvaron mi vida". Y ella está hablando de, sí, sí, una Villa de Tamales gerenciada por Cher. Y sabemos que un trabajo similar es siendo hecho por Nicholsville, por Lehigh, por muchos grupos de defensa. Y ella dice, "No solo manejan la villa, sino que también son responsables de los vecinos que rodean una villa. Interaccionaron con diversos recursos en la área local para darnos una comida comunitaria al día desde una iglesia, clubs y agencias. Teníamos la camioneta móvil médica que venía cada semana, hubo compras de control de la enfermedad cada mes y servicios de baña una vez por semana. Si no fuera por su ayuda con la vivienda temporal y los recursos, habría perdido, muy posiblemente en relapse, sin recursos. Las Villas de Tamales en la que estaba enseñaba nuestra responsabilidad según nuestro nivel de habilidad y nos enseñaba cuán importante la comunidad realmente es y cuán importante es devolverle a nuestra comunidad. Siempre seré agradecido por Cher, Wheel y Lehigh por hacerme mi miembro de la comunidad que soy en la sociedad hoy". No hay duda de que escucharán testimonios similar esta noche. Tenemos a Queen Bee, King Rios, Anitra Freeman, Alex Finan, David Haynes y Sean Smith. Si todos pueden colgar en orden, seguiré repitiendo los nombres, pero no queremos perder tiempo en las personas que vienen. Vayan. Cada uno de ustedes tiene dos minutos.
Buenas tardes, miembros del Consejo. Gracias por esta reunión y gracias por estar presentes en las chambres. Mi nombre es Queen Bee, King Rios. Soy miembro de Wheel. Soy líder de Women in Black. Y para aquellos de ustedes que no saben quién es Women in Black, estamos en silencio vigilando a cada persona sin hogar que muere fuera debido a la violencia en King County. Hasta ayer, nos quedamos por nueve personas, trayendo el total de este año a 93 que nos quedamos por en 2019. A partir de 11 de octubre de 2018, ya habíamos quedado por 100. Los números están subiendo. Ni puedo decir cuán importante es que tengamos encampamientos, cuán importante es para las Villas de Tamales y cuán importante es que necesitamos personas, pioneros de la comunidad de base, como Cher y Wheel y Nicholsville, para recibir el poder real de dirigir estas comunidades. Han estado haciendo esto por tanto tiempo y merecen tener el poder para continuar haciéndolo. Soy un productor, Cher, gracias a Dios por ellos, participante. Automanejamiento significa mucho. La gente debería querer ver que las cosas cambien en esta ciudad. Y si todos ustedes, los miembros del Consejo, no lo cambian, ¿cómo podemos, como gente, no querer ver un cambio? Es muy importante para mí especialmente porque mi corazón está roto y cada vez que estoy en silencio vigilante, se rompe mi corazón y quiero ver el cambio y Cher y Wheel y Nicholsville necesitan el poder. Gracias, Dios los bendiga y feliz cumpleaños.
Hey, feliz cumpleaños.
Gracias.
Mi nombre es Anitra Freeman. Estoy con Cher y Wheel y Women in Black. Estoy feliz de ver su propuesta, Shama, por 12 millones de dólares para expandir las Villas de Tamales, 20 nuevas villas y gracias, Shama, por todo lo que hace. Cher y Wheel y Nicholsville son los pioneros en los encampamientos automanejados y en las Villas de Tamales. Ninguna agencia estaría dispuesta a establecer una nueva Villa de Tamales hoy si Nicholsville no hubiera demostrado el modelo exitoso. Ninguna agencia estaría dispuesta a afirmar un encanto si Cher y Wheel no hubieran demostrado el modelo exitoso. Encampamientos automanejados y Villas de Tamales tienen un gran historial de aumento de comunidad, tanto dentro de la comunidad como entre las personas sin hogar y viviendas. Es vital que el poder sea dado a las personas que están haciendo el trabajo y las personas que tienen el historial de hacer un gran trabajo. Aumentar el número de Villas de Tamales va a disminuir el número de muertes. Como dijo Queen Bee, ya tenemos demasiado, maldito, muchos. Por favor, hagan menos muertes el año siguiente, hagan más refugios. Gracias.
Este. Bueno, no estoy seguro de si puedo seguir con sus discursos completamente movidos. Quiero decir, mis amigos en Wheel y Women in Black...
¿Puedes cerrar el micrófono?
Perdón. Pero sí, mis amigos en Wheel y Women in Black hacen un trabajo realmente genial. Mi nombre es Alex Finch. Lo disculpo por mi terrible escritura, pero soy uno de los tres líderes demócráticamente electos en Nicholsville Norte Lake. Yo, junto con mis otros residentes de Norte Lake, apoyo esta hoja verde y apoyo esta nueva propuesta legislación. Como dijeron, con 93 muertes violentas en la comunidad sin hogar, creo que esto es moralmente y éticamente lo correcto de hacer. No solo salvará vidas, sino que también ayudará al maestro a cumplir su promesa de abrir 1000 nuevas Villas de Tamales, Villas de Tamales, perdón. Realmente esperaba que el Consejo entero estuviera aquí hoy para que pudieran escuchar lo que todos tenemos que decir y realmente espero que después de esto firmen. No solo porque salvará mi refugio, sino porque sin refugio la gente muere. Gracias.
Siguiente es David Haynes, luego Sean Smith, después de Sean es James Walker y John Trevina. Lo siento si lo digo mal.
Ciudad de Seattle, gente de Seattle, aquí estamos 20 años en el nuevo milenio y los mismos non-profits del siglo XX siguen en cargo ganando dinero. Sharon Lee de Lehigh, Instituto de Inns de Calle de baja renta, no puede ofrecer esfuerzos honestos, diligentes para proporcionar baño y lavandería en el estación de refugio urbano. ¿Por qué en la tierra permite al Consejo de Ciudad permitir que un non-profit subhumano se deshaga de tanto dinero que reemplaza los necesidades del mundo primero y tiene dólares extra de impuestos para comprar a los políticos y los lobbys? Necesitamos una injunctione federal de donaciones de Sharon Lee a Consejos y activistas que se comercian de tratos que roban las necesidades de los pobres. Sharon Lee contrata a gestores de casos para ayudar a las personas sin hogar a encontrar dinero para pagar su renta, sin embargo, todo lo que Sharon Lee posee fue pagado por contribuyentes impuestos, deshaciéndose como los sin hogar. Usa los hogares de la tierra para manipular los datos, enviando a la gente de uno de sus hogares a otro de sus, la llamada viviendas permanentes, mientras discriminando contra Cher y Nicholsville en competencia para manipular datos para más dinero de contrato. ¿Por qué Sharon Lee tiene que cobrar impuestos a los contribuyentes por una villa que todo fue donado y construido por voluntarios? Es obvio que el Consejo de Ciudad vendió la integridad, la supervisión del complejo industrial sin hogar en un negocio de financiar el apoyo a las elecciones reelecciones a costa de contribuyentes y subhumano maltrato de los sin hogar. Sharon Lee está en el registro diciendo que fue abusada por su padre de familia, quien abatía los gastos de familia del mundo primero y niega su comida nutricional y opresiona a su madre y familia. Si investigan los servicios que no consigue proporcionar, como el baño y la lavandería, usando empleados racistas, lentos, deshonestos, violando los derechos, y el desastre del tercer mundo que está deshaciéndose de ella, prueba que es un criminal corrompido, opresando a los inocentes pobres y deshaciendo a los contribuyentes y justificando una investigación del complejo industrial sin hogar completo, comenzando con Sharon Lee, inns de baja renta, viviendas de Seattle y viviendas de Plymouth.
Sean Smith, James Walker, John Trevina, Lindy Knighton.
Gracias, consejo Sawant. Es un pena que el resto...
No, soy Sean Smith.
Sí.
Y estoy por delante de usted. Ella acabó de leer mi nombre.
Es un pena que el resto del Consejo no esté aquí. Porque todos sabemos que las Villas de Tamales son un éxito inmenso. Es un pena que se sienten en el fondo y esperen a que la ordenanza existente se acabe y se vaya. Si realmente creyeran en el modelo, habrían firmado ya. Espero que en los próximos días tengamos al menos dos otros signos que se requieren para mover esta ordenanza adelante. No sé qué más decir, aparte de que la vida de la gente está en juego. Gracias.
Gracias.
Hola, James Walker, muchas gracias por hacer esto y estar aquí. Y sé que hay mucho para escuchar y lo aprecio realmente. Soy James Walker, soy sano de 17 meses. Vivo en las Villas de Tamales de Tamales de Georgetown. Gracias. Y la Tamales de Georgetown es mi Malibu de la montaña. Es el lugar donde puedo trabajar en mi sobriedad, tengo una vida limpia, estable, estoy reintroducido a una situación social y después de seis años de intentar, parece que podría terminar mi álbum también, mi música. Pero esto no es solo sobre mí, hay personas que solo necesitan esto mucho más que yo. Voy a dar un ejemplo, cambiar el nombre, voy a llamarlo Wayne. Es un tipo deprimido y deshabilitado en desarrollo, tiene 28 años, es deprimido y está operando a lo que es un siete añitos. Y desearía que todos los que pudieran escuchar esto pudieran pensar, ¿qué harías en las calles si tuvieras, como tu siete añitos, cómo te llevarías? ¿Cómo te llevarías un cuarto? Fuimos capaces de sacarlo de una situación sexual abusiva con un socio abusivo y sacarlo a un lugar estable para vivir. Secondariamente, dos más gente, voy a llamarlos Joan y Ken, se deshazieron de la heroína en Georgetown porque tenían un lugar estable donde podían estar y ahora van a la tratamiento a una base anual. Así que solo quería decir que Seattle no está muriendo de ninguna manera. Tiene gente que cae por los escombros y hay mucha gente que no es capaz de hacer ese trabajo de 9 a 5 y un cuarto de dólar de renta y es por eso que necesitamos Villas de Tamales. Y la villa es una solución, no tienes que construir los ascensores, no tienes que comprar los ascensores, no tienes que comprar nada nuevo, no tienes que entrenarlos y mantenecerlos, somos unidades autónomas. Gracias.
Gracias. Lindy Knighton, luego Rebecca Finkes y Anthony López.
Hola, mi nombre es John Trevina de Nicholsville Norte Lake. Y un poeta dijo, "Las familias felices son todas iguales, cada familia infeliz es infeliz de su propia manera". Y creo que es cierto cómo la gente llega a la ausencia de hogar. Todos nos desvanece nuestros, ya sabes, deudas médicas o adicción o enfermedad mental o todas estas cosas diferentes. Yo, vivía con mi hermano menor, él me daba un buen trato en la renta y tenía un trabajo parcial. Se casó, se casó con una mujer y ella estaba muy tímida y yo estaba muy timido y solo sentí algo incómodo, así que me mudé a los bosques. Bueno, traté de ir a un refugio y me golpearon por las malditas almohadas, así que empecé a dormir en las aguas y establecí un campamento en esta ravina y me gustó a veces, pero eventualmente fue realmente difícil hablar con la gente, incluso en la línea de la tienda de comestibles. Y encontré Tent City en Nicholsville y ha ayudado a mí, como, a rellenar con la gente. De todos modos, mis sueños están más allá de ser sin hogar ahora, tengo sueños que están más allá de eso. Y creo que una monopoliación no nos permite hacerlo mejor para lidiar con cada tipo de persona que entra en esta situación de una manera diferente, no sé, ese es mi pensamiento. Gracias por traer adelante esta legislación y todo.
Gracias. Lindy, usted es siguiente, luego Rebecca, luego Anthony López y luego Josh Castle.
Hola, soy Lindy Knighton, me parece ser la presidenta estatal del Partido Progresivo y quiero decirles que personalmente apoyaré este proyecto para ustedes para que puedan usar el nombre, lo que sea que haga. En cambio, quiero decir que la solución a la gente sin hogar empieza con la vivienda, es tan obvio. Y la solución a las rentas indignantes es la vivienda que la gente puede pagar. A veces el sueño americano de la propiedad de hogar necesita ser reducido. Necesitamos Villas de Tamales no solo para los ahora sin hogar, sino para los seniores que no pueden pagar viviendas de tamaño completo. Y ten en cuenta mi grupo favorito para cuidar, las personas con demencia, que realmente necesitan todo el cuidado y guía y ayuda que puedan conseguir. La gente no puede pagar viviendas de tamaño completo, la falta de tierra para construir nos obliga a buscar soluciones de menor escala como las Villas de Tamales que rodean un espacio verde y conectan con el resto de Seattle por muchas rutas de autobús. Villas donde la gente dirige su villa, como en la antigua tradición de la ciudad. Hagan más Villas de Tamales y hagan espacio para las Villas de Tamales en nuestro código de la ciudad. which is one of the big problems. Everyone deserves a safe place of their own to live in. And thank you for your work on this, and happy birthday.
Hello, I am Becca Finkus. I work for Leihi with the Tiny House Program. And I'm really grateful to the many village residents in attendance tonight for their willingness to be vulnerable and open about their experiences. And so with that in mind, it's not my place to speak on their behalf of the clients and the many hardships that they faced. But I do want to speak for a group that's often left out of these discussions. The Tiny House Villages currently offer safe and dignified shelter for 26 children experiencing homelessness, and 71 total over the past year. I like to spend a lot of my time at a fellow village. The kids there ride around on their bikes, and they love playing hide-and-seek. And they're the goofiest and sweetest little humans that I've ever had the pleasure of ever knowing. The villages offer a safe place for them to take a shower before school, the security of a full night's rest so that they can do their homework, and the stability to think about what they want to be when they grow up. I urge council to support this ordinance and funding for increased villages in the 2020 budget. And please feel free to reach out if you have any interest in visiting one of the villages and meeting one of our future astronauts, teachers, police officers, and hopefully president someday. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Lopez. I'm a current resident at Tiny Cabin Safe Harbor, also known as T5. This evening, I would like to share a bit of my testimony...
Could you get a little bit closer to the microphone?
Oh, sorry. This evening, I would like to share a bit of my testimony journey, if you will, at Inner Bay. I arrived at the village 11 months ago, broken and lost, with nowhere else to go with my cat. The village accepted me with open arms, and I've been thriving off and on ever since. Exactly two months ago marks the one-year anniversary of my sexual assault, which is the reason why I became homeless. Following that day, I fell into despair and lost all hope. I started to abuse my prescription medications. I was headed down a dark road. During this time, my fellow tiny cabin peers and case managers noticed a change in me, and as I acted out, they reached in. They came in and coached me with respect and love, especially one of the case managers at the village, Kyle Menzingo. He took me under his wing, and he showed me the light and showed me the way. I know that sounds corny, but that's how I felt and how I feel. I am 34 days now clean and sober from the prescription medication. Thank you. I've been offered a job with Leihi. I've been offered schooling with Fair Start, and I start culinary school this Monday. What I'm trying to say is that tiny house villages really do work, and because of the tiny villages run by Leihi and Sharon Lee, basically, they have saved my life. Thank you.
Josh, before you go, next we have, after Josh, we have Elliot Holt, then Cassandra Gaspard, Laura Dundas, Jack Imus, and Carlo Grecki, I think.
Hi, I'm Josh Castle, and I work for Leihi. 196 people died living on the streets last year. Nobody should have to die due to lack of shelter in one of the richest cities in the world. We are grateful to you and your colleagues for the funding, even though many of them are not here today, for the funding and support of eight tiny house villages in Seattle, which has saved and greatly improved thousands of lives in the course of the three-and-a-half year old program. We are grateful especially to you, Councilmember Swant, for your leadership and sponsoring of the Tiny House Village Ordinance. We urge passage of this as soon as possible to expand the number of villages and eliminate the two-year limit. There is a reason why 43 faith leaders have signed a letter urging the passage of this ordinance. Residents of most of the villages are here today to share their stories and how the village has been helpful for them. I think we're all in agreement that we need more tiny house villages. We're all collectively in agreement on that. As you know, tiny house villages are the preferred shelter, are for people being referred to them. These villages provide shelter, safety, and community to close to 1,000 people per year. These are not a permanent solution, but a critical step in solving from homelessness to housing. People and families who live in the villages often come from chronic homelessness. They've experienced trauma, violence, and exposure to the cold and rain. Many lack an ID and any way to prove who they are, or have a warrant on the record because they missed a court date, often as a result of simply having no address. Many are physically disabled, struggling with an addiction, or have a mental health condition. It is very hard to go directly from these serious challenges and obstacles into housing, especially when that housing doesn't exist. Every village has case management, and several of these social workers are behavioral health specialists. They work with residents to obtain housing, employment, healthcare, education, childcare treatment, and many other services. They uncover every stone they can to find permanent housing, and even with the severe lack of housing, they are very successful in doing so. The villages have very successful, very high rates of access to permanent housing than other shelter programs, and our case managers have transitioned over 500 into permanent housing. Please pass this ordinance for this very successful program to help get many more people and families from homelessness into long-term permanent housing. Thank you, and happy birthday.
Hello, everyone. My name is Elliot Holt. I live in the True Hope Tiny House Village here in Seattle, run by Leihi. I live in a tiny house with a giant Hello Kitty painting on the front of it. I wanted to urge my support for this measure, my tiny house for me and everyone in my village. I know the True Hope has really helped them out a great deal, and we're like a community there. And Leihi has done so much for the homeless community of Seattle. And I would just wanted to urge, you know, people to pass this measure to continue to support homelessness in tiny houses in Seattle.
Hi there. My name's Cassandra Gaspard, and I'm currently a resident at Camp Second Chance, and have been since April of this year, when I found myself with an eviction. I am in support of the expansion of the tiny house villages for, A, for the simple reason that it's a scary place to be as a woman out on the street, and it's, this time of year is very, very cold and wet. Like these women here, I think to myself, it's not us against them. If we, as all this support for homelessness in general, could come together, what a powerhouse we could really be in this city. So I want to thank you, Councilmember, for not only spending your birthday here with us, but for all the work that you do all year long, every day. Thank you very much. I really appreciate everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Cassandra. And I want you to know, I wouldn't be wanting to do anything else on my birthday. I'm happy to be here with you all.
I think there's somebody ahead of me.
Yeah, there is Laura. Do you have a Laura Dundas here? Did you? Okay. Okay. Let me know if later you want to speak. We have, are you Jack? Do we have Jack Imus? No? Are you Carlo?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Carlo, go ahead. And after Carlo, there'll be Naomi C., Brid Fleming, and Reverend Jeffrey, and then Kyle Malone.
Thank you, Councilwoman Swant.
You can pull it up. You can pull the microphone up.
Thank you, Councilwoman Swant, for showing up. Do appreciate that. I live in the Inner Bay Tiny Cabin Village, in between Queen Anne and Magnolia, and with partnership with Port of Seattle, who, quite frankly, their involvement puts this council to shame, with present company excluded. I would encourage the council to look up the October 8th meeting to see how something like this should be run. There's 100 stories like Antonio's. I have a similar story. But that's not the way I like to frame it. Sorry, I'm shaking. I like to say what we do for the community. Kids like Becca are learning civic involvement. We have kids that help build the cabins, help volunteer. Community gets involved. A lot of us have jobs. We contribute to the economy. Get people out of the tents. 60 tents are off the street because of that cabin. You know, when I get on the bus, I don't stink because we've got full shower services and laundry. This is, you know, these cabins serve the community, not just us. There's a lot of things that the community gets out of them. Court systems get unclogged, because if you're on the streets, you're gonna meet a cop. Just that simple. Everything you do when you're on the street is illegal. Loitering, vagrancy, having to use the restroom. Business owners don't want people in there. We have Sharps boxes for people that have addictions. We take care of that. They steer people towards help, our case managers. People who have addictions lean on each other to get through it. Mental illness, same thing. Whatever the cost of the village is, is way cheaper than having the system running on its own. And that's what we do for the community, and that needs to be sold more, I think. Thank you for fighting the good fight. Happy birthday.
Thank you, everyone.
First, Ms. Swant, thank you for being here tonight. My name is Naomi C., and I'm currently an undergraduate student at the University of Washington and a volunteer at the Low Income Housing Institute. I feel grateful to have the opportunity today to share my experience over the last months with the tiny house village communities. As a student, I have learned more in these past couple months about compassion, kindness, and community than anywhere else. Beyond the village's unique success in housing and supporting individuals, the tiny house villages have this incredible ability to facilitate the creation of community on a large scale. In just a short time, I have had the privilege of witnessing how tiny houses have brought together businesses, religious institutions, schools, governments, and citizens under one shared mission: to care for our fellow neighbors. There is so much more to each village than the physical structure. Behind every nailed piece of wood, there is a dedicated volunteer, a passionate donor, and a committed organizer. Behind every running village, there is a tireless group of CAC members, who represent generous and caring communities that surround them. And behind every positive outcome, there is a gifted human being, lifted up and empowered by the community of their fellow residents. Thank you for being here. This matters.
Brid? And then after Brid, Reverend Jeffrey, then Kyle Malone, and then... Yes. Country, with a K.
Hello, my name is Brid Fleming. Hello, my name is Brid Fleming. Thank you, Ms., for being here, Councilmember. I understand it's your birthday. I hope it's the best ever. I came into homelessness by a way of, like everybody else. In being homeless, along the way, I learned a lot of things about compassion and humility, pride, suffering, pain, drug abuse. I did things, I learned to do things my own way, my own rules, set my own rules, spiraling further and further, out of control, further and further, into despair and depression, ending up in drug treatment centers, detox centers, ambulances. By the grace of God, I started climbing back out of there, and along the way, I started finding places like The Mission, which, that's where I learned about humility, The Mission. And I also learned about other things, you know? It's like, what kind of help there was out there for me. And then after a few years into it, I ran into a place called Tent City 3, where I became EC member and a member of that community. But I also solved problems there. People are speaking here today on the power of being with Nicholsville, or this, being with this. I don't understand any of that. I only understand it until I found Second Chance Tiny House Village. I didn't think that there was any hope. I really thought I was going to spend another winter that I didn't know I was going to live through or not. Again, I was scared to death of the winters coming of 2019 and 2020, until I found the tiny village. Then there, I found respect. I've learned humility, how to re-step back into society following rules. I've learned that rules are put into place so we can live together as a community, caring for each other, and volunteering, and helping our neighbor out. It's a beautiful thing, these tiny villages. I hope they continue to grow.
Councilwoman Swant, first of all, I want to say that I am just privileged to be here tonight, and when I heard somebody say happy birthday, I thought it was a joke. I didn't know that this was actually your birthday. This is actually your birthday.
Yes.
That's... (singing) Happy birthday to you.
You can't do this to me.
(singing) Happy birthday, Chama. Happy birthday to you. That's a...
Please don't embarrass me.
I don't have much else to say. I just want to say that this is amazing, amazing example of public service. And if other public servants had that attitude, that need comes before us, that to serve the community means to meet human needs that are acute. Homelessness is acute. The weather is changing. Mothers and daughters and sons are sleeping in their cars. I have had no experience with any solution to homelessness better than the tiny homes. My experience with that has been just, has lifted my spirits. Everyone that I know that has gone through the tiny house experience has come out on the bright side. I just want to applaud you, and I hope that city council will continue to do what they need to do to protect our children, our vulnerable women, men who can't make it in this, who have problems, and who have been fallen through the cracks, that they will do what they should do as a decent and humane group to support this cause. Thank you for your service.
So we have Kyle, then Country, then James Brumborg, and Carrie Lucinian.
Hi, my name is Kyle Malone. I was homeless before I moved to Camp Second Chance. I suffer from a seizure disorder and some...
Can you go closer so we can hear you better?
Sure. I'm sorry. I suffer from a seizure disorder and some mental illness. Aside from that, I'm a pretty great guy. Camp Second Chance has allowed me to have food, shelter, this very clothing that I'm wearing. I wasn't even aware that this meeting was happening until they let me know and made me show up. The most important thing about Camp Second Chance is it's really its own little community. I don't feel homeless. Without it, I would be on the streets battling my seizures, battling my mental illness, and it's terribly dangerous. So I get case management. I am on my way to get permanent housing, disability, and there's hope for me again. Without that, I could very well be one of your statistics, whether it be a violent death or just having a seizure in the cold. It's very possible. So thank you for your time.
After Country is James, James Brumborg. Please come, yeah, please come in the front. And then Carrie, and then Peggy Hoots.
Good evening, Councilwoman. My name is Country. I am here on behalf of Sherwill and Tent City 3. I am, would like to thank you above and beyond for your above and beyond Call of Duty that you have been obedient to, and you totally just rocked it. It's awesome. I came to Seattle for the first time in 2015 to join my father... I came to Seattle for the first time in 2015 to join my father Duncan Stansel, who has been part of the Sharewill community for 13 years, to help him through some tough times and some bad health. And he took me to Tent City 3, which provided me with a safe place to stay while I could help him with him and his healing and what he was going through in life. I was so taken by the sense of community at Tent City 3 and that Sharewill provides with all of their shelters. They provided me with a safe place to stay. There was a lot of support. There was a lot of guidance. There was a lot of wisdom. There was genuine TLC for the individuals that came into camp. They showed all of us and these newfound surroundings, they showed us so much grace. They did show us humility. They taught us how to be humble, in fact. They did us to appreciate what we had, that we're not entitled to anything. I chose to come back just so that I could be a voice for Tent City 3. I'm here today to thank you very much for your grant sheet proposal to expand the tiny house villages in Seattle. Sharewill's ability to provide a self-managed community structure has been observed worldwide and modeled from for decades. This is an expensive place to live anymore, not just Seattle, but everywhere. The opportunity to have a safe environment while trying to rebuild their lives is great. We look forward to the opportunity to open new villages where we can provide this great model for safe shelter again, this time, if allowed, to operate the camps with autonomy. We will give it our best to ensure those we shelter to be safe and free of conflict between involved organizations. Thank you so very much for everything.
My name is James Brumbagh. I'm formerly a, was with Share, with Tent City 3, and prior to that, with their indoor shelter systems for a total of a year and a half. I think I am going to have to refer to the notes. Share has provided, well, I have several friends here today who are here in the tiny villages now. Several people I know, I saw one actually working, had gotten employment, housing, and got out of their situations. I saw one person, one acquaintance, putting out Christmas lights over on the soon-to-be-ded Macy's building. So this system works. I'm doing badly. The shelter system, especially with tiny houses, it gives a place of community, stability, privacy, security, and dignity. And you need stability and community to basically stay balanced and be able to progress If you have stability, and you know where your next meal is coming from, and you know where you're going to be sleeping that night, you can direct your attention to other items which you may need. So my friend, he is, oh, has electricity, which we did not have. This provides power for phones and computers, where you can do job search, find housing, and medical help, and remain in contact with your friends and family. So you can, just having a door to lock and a place to keep your stuff, and knowing who's going to be there, provides a great deal of security for people to be, help them move on. Tiny houses are temporary, but it's a process, and we do need more of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Kerry, and then Peggy, then we have Harold, and then Imogen, and then Barbara Finney.
Hi, my name is Kerry Lucine. I don't know where the other council members are, but personally, I can't support anyone, I can't vote for anyone who does not support this. And I guess those people are the ones that I'm chiefly speaking to. I live in West Seattle. Since I moved there, the rents, I think, have tripled. I've also been working outside since January of 2018, so I see homeless people on the street daily, and it is really heartbreaking. I did the tiny house tour as part of the Green Homes Expo in 2018, and I was very impressed. And I see a really disturbing trend in online neighborhood groups of really vitriolic blaming of people who are homeless. And I guess it's understandable if one is feeling that, oh, I can't even support my own family, why should I try to support other people? But there, this can happen to anyone for so many reasons. I think many people here have spoken about reasons they became homeless. I'll also say this just happened to someone I know who is working because they simply could not find affordable rent in time. I've got a relative in another state who is building their own tiny house because they're a cancer survivor. And I understand that there can be problems with tiny house villages and communities and neighborhoods, but this is true of any place that you have people living. So it's true where you have renters, it's true with, it's definitely true with homeowners associations. And so we need to address these problems because the problem of dying on the street is a much worse problem. So I understand that the permanent solution is very complicated, but that means we need safe, humane, temporary solutions, which this is. I do not want to see any more stories of someone in my city dying on the streets. We know that people are dying. We know that we don't have the permanent solutions yet. We know that this is a temporary solution that works. So what more information do we need? Thank you.
Good evening, councilperson Sawant. My name is Peggy Hoots, and I'm a Nicholsville founder and volunteer. Thank you, Councilmember Sawant, for drafting a new encampment ordinance. Thank you for proposing 2020 budget changes that would keep Nicholsville Northlake Tiny House Village open. Thank you for supporting a new site for occupied Othello residents who don't want to live in the top-down, low-barrier encampment Lehigh created there. Nicholsville supports the entire people's budget, including rent control and its many crucial elements to alleviate human suffering and spark systemic change. The draft Tiny House Village ordinance is an opportunity to improve tiny house villages and add needed protections for residents. Here are examples of what Nicholsville has learned are badly needed. Number one, a resident right to privacy and assembly. At occupied Othello Tiny House Village, Lehigh has installed seven surveillance cameras aimed at the residents without consent. There have been multiple incidents over the last five years where Lehigh case managers shared residents' private information, often with other residents. The Human Services Department recently wrote that Lehigh has no obligation to allow residents to have meetings with people from outside the village. They don't believe in freedom of assembly, apparently. Number two, a legitimate grievance process. Lehigh is sitting on grievances filed months ago in accord with their published processes, which promised resolution in ten days. The ultimate arbiter of all Lehigh grievances is one person, a mid-level manager ensconced in the downtown office, beyond whom there's no appeal. There is no real grievance process for HSD at all. Number three, a definition of self-management and democracy. Calling a system where paid onsite managers can override democratically voted village decisions is Orwellian. Number four, no more monopolies. Granting one large corporation exclusive rights to operate tiny house villages hurts homeless people. It stops us from seeing what really works best, and it makes no financial sense. Thank you. Do we have Harold here?
Yes, sir.
Your, yours, so Harold, you go after Imogen.
Okay.
So Imogen, Harold, and Barbara, and then Cinda Stenger. Go ahead, Imogen.
In the old days, I know a lot about the old days. We had the Committee to End Homelessness. That was 10 years, it could be 12, it could be 14 years ago. The Committee to End Homelessness. They were smart, they were, they were caring, but everything didn't work. Homelessness, there were thousands more homelessness, thousands more homeless people every year. Nothing worked. Now we have something that works. It's been really wonderful and exciting tonight to listen to people say that the tiny house village makes a difference. It works. It gives people, it gives homeless people the power to get their lives back. It's been exciting to hear that, hasn't it? City Council has got to approve the ordinance. Ninety-four people have already died, and winter is coming. I hope city council will want to approve the ordinance and build more tiny house villages. Thank you.
I have some evidence. Two reports came out this week. One from the California Project Lab, and it demonstrates what homeless people go through on the street, trauma, death, and our health. It skyrockets. You know, I had two, my big left toe and right toe amputated, and I went to Georgetown, Nicholsville, where I found showers, great place to recover. And I'm an exception to the rule, so I'm not going to say what's good and what's not. But I took a hold of those things that they had there, and I grabbed onto them. They saved my life. Whatever was there, let's get more of them. We need more tiny house villages, and we live in a democracy. Whatever one person does doesn't mean the other person has to do it. One person, one vote, you know? If it gets homeless people off the street into some housing, do we really care if that person did it this way or the other person did it that way? You know, grow up. We need people off the street because people are dying. My dog, my best friend, died there. But I'll be damned if I'd say I don't want to go there. And I think everybody has that right, without any more trauma to them. You know, these reports talk about, because they didn't have the data, but what homeless people go through, even in shelters, we go through so much trauma because there's so much political fighting. You know, I'm just not for that. But I am for more tiny houses. And if we can get wraparound services in those tiny houses and demand that from our service providers, and I could say things that are just not appropriate, because that's nitpicking. What I do want to say, and I do want to impress upon the council, is that we get more tiny houses. So people get off the street, survive, get those medical things they need, get into jobs, get into school, whatever they need to do, but they don't need to be on the street. And I thank you, and happy birthday.
So after Barbara, we have Cinda Stenger, then Mark Warden, then Penny Lane Panic.
Hello, Councilmember Sawant. I want to thank you for having this on your birthday, and I feel very humbled to be here tonight and hear all the voices. My name is Barbara Finney. I'm from District 5 in North Seattle. And I'd like to read a little something from the beautiful letter that was sent to the mayor and city council from 43 faith leaders. Homelessness is a crisis crying out for a humane compassionate remedy. We are excited that Seattle City Councilmember Shama Sawant has brought forward legislation to allow for up to 40 tiny house villages in the city. Well, the pastor of the church in our Broadview Bitter Lake neighborhood signed on to this letter, Pastor Gary. And I want to thank Reverend Angela for that, for help with that, not help, but facilitating that. It's so important in our North Seattle to have tiny house villages. We don't have any. So there's an urgent need to extend the immediate solutions to provide our homeless neighbors with dignity and humanity. Tiny house villages can be that. As a trained professional nurse, now retired, I assess the navigation team sweeps as being harmful to the health and well-being of the most vulnerable of us and wasteful of city resources. I'm asking council to please support Councilmember Sawant's legislation to allow for up to 40 tiny house villages in the city, and use the $10 million spent on sweeps instead for tiny house villages.
Good evening, yes. I'm Cinda Stenger. I'm a member of Al Qaeda United Church of Christ and Sound Foundations Northwest. We have built over 30 homes at Camp Second Chance. It has been a labor of love and joy, and we've personally seen transformation in lives, both, we like to say, both sides of the ladder, both volunteers and residents of the camp. It works. But I, and I have it on first news, that these volunteers are ready to get going and build more houses in these tiny house villages. So we're ready to go. All right? So that's awesome. What I could address specifically tonight and a message to the council, that the public is very upset with the amount of drug abuse and number of drug users that are in unsanctioned encampments who need help. This is a public outcry that we hear all the time. There's an opportunity for synergy with the tiny house villages and tackling this issue. We know that people choose to go into rehab when they know they will have supportive housing when they come out. One reason why Camp Second Chance is so successful is it's a self-declared, clean-and-sober camp. So if you have the opportunity to have more camps that are clean and sober, more people who are finding themselves lost in drug abuse will choose to go into rehab because they know they have supportive housing. They know they'll have wraparound services when they come out if they can reside in these sanctioned encampments. So as a message to the city and to the council, this is a tremendous opportunity to show that we are helping to tackle that issue. Thank you, and happy birthday.
So we have Mark, and then Penny, and then Rivi Washington. Go ahead, Mark.
I'm Mark Warden. Thank you, Councilmember Sawant, for spearheading this ordinance, and this has got to be some heavy lifting. Looking around, and you don't see any help right now. Cinda Stenger, I'm a member of Sound Foundations. We've already built 32 houses. We're ready to build more. I've seen the transformation because I've been there for 18 months. We're the hammer and saw part of Sound Foundations, and we've been there every weekend for the last 18 months. So we've seen a lot of transition in people's lives. And my partner, Tamas, likes to say if we come back in six months and we don't recognize a single face, that's success.
Right.
Is Penny Lane Panic here? Is that you?
Hi, everybody. Thanks for coming in tonight.
After you, there's Rivi, and then Eliana, and then Susan Clark.
How you doing, councilmember? Happy birthday again, and thanks for giving me this opportunity as well. My name is Penny Lane Panic. I've been with Nicholsville as well as Lehigh. Over the last eight and a half years, I've been homeless here in the Seattle area. I'm a musician. I came out here to work on my music full-time from Dallas and found myself, you know, in this position. Kind of scary. I come from both sides of the tracks now, I could say. And what I've noticed is, is that there seems to be just a bit of a hiccup in the streamline of the process. It needs to be a little bit more, well, I was in there for Lehigh for nine months. I just got into my new place in Mercer Island just about a week or so ago, thank God. It has saved my life. And I was still using quite a bit, and after I saw my, my thing started rolling in the right direction, paperwork that I needed, things I needed to get reassessed with and back in line with my military benefits I'm trying to get back. Soon as I saw things moving in the right direction, as did other people, when they see their things moving in the right direction, the usage tapers way off, way off. I've seen people that had just arrived and were just, mm, you know? And then definitely within a matter of just a few months of things starting moving forward, their uses started tapering off, without them even really realizing it, until it's brought to their attention, how great they look, seemed to be more focused on what needs to be done. What I do suggest is that there's streamlined within the system. What I do suggest is that there's streamline within the system of a range of maybe three to six months, so that also with Section 8, I'm on Section 8, the process. With me, the amount wasn't quite up to par with what was the rental amount in the area, minus maybe $50 or so, and trying to get that infraction, you know, fixed so that I could get in. I had my Section 8 in April, and, you know, I just got in just now, just finding diligently, diligently, me and Lindsay, my caseworker, looking for places left and right, and, you know? So that needs to be fixed, the streamlining of the timeframe within the departments within the city, as well as the amount of people that are hired into help with case management as well. We had a lot, some shift changes there that caused delays as well. But there should be, you know, maybe three to five months, maybe six, and there should be somebody else right behind us. I also would think that-
Sorry, could you wrap up also?
Ma'am.
Could you start wrapping up?
Oh, yes. Oh, I did. That could turn into a long conversation with me, sorry. Those who know me.
Please feel free to, you know, offline, talk to my staff.
Sure, thank you very much. I appreciate all that you do. Please continue your efforts, yes. Thanks.
Shama Sawant, first of all, thank you and happy birthday. My name is Reevee Washington, and I've been in these halls a while ago, and I've been gone for a while. I'm one of the graduates, I'll say, from the Love Unit. I was in a tiny house village. So I've now got myself an apartment. So first things first, I am going to say they do help. You know, they are really a provision for people to really straighten up their life if they choose to do it with the assistance of different places. But just speaking of things, you know, when I first came up here, I was with Stop the Sweeps. One of the organizers of Stop the Sweeps, that was one of the problems that the city had back then. We've sort of gotten that down. Where it's done got out of hand. People didn't think the Stop the Sweeps would work. Well, it's working. Same thing with this. You know, people are saying, well, this is not going to work, you know, supportive housing. Give them that, give them this, give them that. But we all have to come together and do something. It's not just going to be on the City Council, but it's going to be on society too. Everybody's got to put their work in. But one of the things I did want to say, I do want to stress and really make known is that inside the tiny houses, I was afforded dignity, because when I was out on the street, the navigation team, some of the councilors, you know, I'm asking for, you know, give me applications for this to try to help me with this. Reevee, you're not, you know, you're not in need. You don't need nothing. You're too this, you're too that, you're too capable of doing this. So I couldn't get in navigation centers, so I always had the little tent things. And when they took us off the field, I'm just, will say one thing. Me and my group, we had tried to open up exactly where Lehigh has now set up the Love Unit. That was one of the places we had wanted to go there. And they've taken out, you know, some of the advice that some of the people have, because back in the day, we tried to get 50 units put out right there, because I was in Second Chance too. I left there. But it's a good thing that they're open. There are some troubles and, you know, some problems without, within the whole system. You know, everybody is not going to be perfect. It's not going to be one fix-all for everybody. There are a whole bunch of different things, and nobody's perfect on one side, neither is the council. But I just want to say that I support you all, and, you know, I'm just letting you know, putting it out here and it go around. I'm just about to put my hat back in the ring, and I've got a couple ideas that I want to bring up and talk to you about for the next New Year.
Thank you. After Eliana, we have Susan Clark, then Pengzi Sui, I think. I'm sorry if I'm reading it wrong, and then Jenny Pak.
Hello, my name is Eliana Scott-Thonas. I'm the chair of the Othello Village Community Advisory Committee, and I've lived for 22 years in the Orthodox Jewish community in Seward Park. Councilmember Harold, if you're watching this, I'm one of your constituents. Councilmembers, 94 of our homeless neighbors have died this year outside or by violence. When I stood here before you all during the Housing For All 2017 budget campaign, it had been 64 people, which was a heartbreaking, record-breaking number then. We said then that without bold action to address both the long and short-term needs, more people would die. Despite good intentions, those bold actions have not been taken, and our vulnerable neighbors continue to suffer. Two phrases which come up frequently in testimony here are "without shelter, people die," and "we need to be investing on the scale of the crisis." And both of those apply to this ordinance. Shelters and tiny houses don't do anything to address the underlying issues causing our homeless crisis, but they save lives, both literally and figuratively. And of the transitional programs available, I keep saying this, tiny house villages have been proven to be our most effective harm reduction strategy for addressing this crisis. Expanding the program as boldly and quickly as possible is an obvious need, and I urge all of you who I hope are watching from home or on the recording later to work to make this happen. However, as I've mentioned here before, as we pioneer cutting-edge solutions, we must continually learn from our experiences and adjust our programs to ensure they are being as effective as possible and remain rooted in our values. Currently, this program has fallen short of being truly person-centered in how it is developed and administered. It fails to provide adequate protections for participants or to center the voices of those most impacted, and the metrics being used to measure success have unintended harmful impacts. We've also slipped unintentionally into having a single service provider, which leaves the program very vulnerable, leaving it to the capacity of that particular provider, and leaves a limit in the range of solutions that can be offered. It's essential the legislation be amended to include at least a commitment to addressing these issues. The rights of program participants need to be clearly defined. There must be access to a robust grievance process external to the service provider agency, and there must be processes for ensuring the voices of participants are included at all levels of planning and evaluation. Please make the necessary amendments, pass this expansion, and then get on to the work of addressing the affordable housing crisis. Thank you. And I want to thank you, Councilmember Sawant, for being the kind of person who just keeps showing up for communities and centering the voices of people most impacted. From when I stood here and implored the council to come join me in protesting the sweep at the Field of Dreams, you have consistently been the council member who shows up when community calls on you. And
Your next year of life to building change. Thank you. We have Susan Clark, then Pengzi, Jenny, and then Calvin Jones.
Hi, I moved into the South Lake Union Tiny House Village back in July. Since then, I have started my own business. I've gotten the, started to get the documents to get my ID so that I can get into housing and things like that. Without being in that tiny house village, I wouldn't have gotten anywhere. I would just be still sitting in my tent, doing nothing, like I did for the last two and a half years. Knowing that I'm safe, knowing that I have a place to go, knowing that the cops aren't going to show up and take everything I have, was such a huge relief. It's just crazy. It's just, it gives you such a peace of mind that you can't, unless you experience, you just don't really understand it, but it's just, it meant a lot to me. And we need more of these villages in this city. I've seen so many people just die. I've had three friends of mine, three close people, in the two years that I've been here, die out here on these streets for no reason, no reason at all. It just, it needs to stop. We need help.
Thank you. Do we have Pengzi here? Jenny, Jenny Pak? Calvin Jones? I think you're next, because, yeah, the other two people aren't here, I don't think.
Hi, my name is Calvin Jones. I'm a renter in District 3. I guess before I came here, I kind of knew I was in support of tiny house villages, and I read a quick article about it, and I just played on testifying, but I just wanted to say that I've been incredibly moved by everyone's testimonies tonight and wish that the whole city could watch what has been said tonight. I would love to have a tiny house village in my neighborhood. I'd love to share a meal with my new neighbors. I think the richest society to ever exist does have the capacity to provide shelter for everyone who needs it, and I'd like to thank you for your leadership on this issue, Councilmember Sawant, and wish you a happy birthday.
Thank you. I can't read the next names. Susanna Smoos, is that, does that sound like your name? Let me go ahead and call the next names, and if you had written your name and I didn't call you, then you can just join the end. So the last three names that I've signed up are Kathleen Myers, Mindy Lee, and then Reverend Angela Yng.
I don't think I can do it. I'm just so moved by what I've heard, and we need you some. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mindy Lee. I'm a member of Puget Sound Advocates Retirement Action and the Transit Writers Union, and I also worked, used to work on a suicide helpline. And all the words I hear tonight from the people that have recovered are all the words that I heard, the things that give people the reason to go on living: hope, community, understanding, support, help. And why you would not continue with that in these tiny houses makes no sense to me at all. It's been proven that it works. We must continue. And I live near Lipton Springs, if I said that correctly, which has since closed down, and I now have people that come into my carport to sleep, they use my electricity, they use the washroom. I have no problem with that. These people are desperate. But if they had a place to go, it wouldn't be necessary for them to do these things. And so you've got to keep, you've got to keep those tiny houses going. It's important. Thank you.
Reverend Yng? And if anybody else wants to speak, but you didn't sign up or I didn't call your name, feel free to just line up here. You don't have, I'm not in-
I didn't sign on the list.
Sure, yeah, you can testify.
I'm sorry?
You can testify after Reverend Yng.
Sure?
Yes, that's fine.
I didn't hear you. Did we say sure or?
Don't worry. Just speak afterwards.
Okay. Good evening, Councilmember Shama Sawant. I'm glad that you're here. And also to the council members that are not here tonight, I hope you're listening. I am the Reverend Angela Yng. I'm the senior pastor of Bethany United Church of Christ. I just want to share with everyone in the room that you're not alone, that we're in this together, and that, what do we need now? Tiny house villages. When do we want it?
Now!
What do we need?
Tiny house villages!
When do we want it?
Now!
What do we want?
Tiny house villages!
When do we want it?
Now!
Okay, I'm used to congregations, so this is good. Here's the thing. We do have 43 Muslim, Buddhist, Jewish, and Christian, and if not Sikh, faith leaders who have signed a letter and sent it to the mayor and to the City Council, asking for more tiny house villages led by the City Council member Shama Sawant. And so let's hear for it. There's going to be 1,000 plus more faith leaders once they find out that they need to be on the list for more tiny house villages. Because here's the thing, 191 people died and it's unacceptable last year. And then if you think about it, 5,000, over 5,000 people on the streets every night under bridges, that's also unacceptable. I live, I believe, and I live by the faith that love your neighbor as yourself. Well, basically, every person on the street is our neighbor. So it's about time that they find, that we find a way in this city that they could be in a house, under shelter, with health care and with rent control, because this is something that we can do in this city. We found out from the city and from Lehigh that over 500 people have been able to transition from a tiny house village into permanent housing, okay? We don't, when people say they need more data, the key part is, we don't need more data. We need people off the streets. Because the city, the city is for the people, by the people, among the people, and we want no one dying in the city, and we don't want anyone on the streets. So here's the thing, we need a budget from the city of Seattle that they will pass more tiny house villages, that they will figure out a way for rent control so that we will not have more people on the streets, we'll have less people on the streets, if not anyone on the streets sleeping tonight, tomorrow, or the day after. This is important. This is unconscionable that people are dying in this extremely wealthy city. We can do this. We, as people around this entire city and King County, the Martin Luther King County Junior County, can do this. So tonight, thank you, Councilmember Sawant, for basically taking back the city and saying, hey, we basically can do this for tiny house villages, for all the people, because if they're in a home with dignity and love, and they could bring up their children in a safe place, because a lot of shelters, it's not available for some of our young girls. It just doesn't, it doesn't work. So we can make this happen. And for what? Each house, only $2,700. Come on, seriously. How better, what a better way to spend our money. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tiwana Moore, and I just wanted to, you know, talk a little bit about the tiny homes. I've been on the streets for seven years almost, and I lived in Tacoma, and somebody brought me out to Seattle, and honestly, I never thought I was going to get any kind of housing, because Tacoma, they really didn't help me out at all. You know, I've been on, you have to excuse me because I have a speech, but it kind of... Anyways, I was on, you know, Section 8 for years, you know, and I have to say that you guys, you guys changed my life, like you really did. I struggled with a lot of things, anger and just, you know, just health issues, and, you know, I eat out of garbage cans, I used to. When I, you know, when you guys brought me in, I didn't think, you know, I didn't know what to think, you know? And honestly, I just, you know, I am like bothered by my words right now, because I went over my speeches like over and over, but I'm thankful for, you know, my case managers, my, the special project manager, just, you know, the opportunity that they give us, you know, just, I don't know, everything. Like I said, you have to excuse me, because I really am like always wanting to talk out loud and do this, and I am somebody who wants to work with, you know, different homes, different tiny homes, and do like different projects, like they were saying somebody had dementia or whatever. You know, we can start like an organization where we could do like an in-home care thing, like with each other, like not where you're certified kind of, but where, like, you know, we just kind of take care of each other. I don't know. I have to write you or talk to you more off-camera, because I'm, I don't know, I'm kind of stage fright a little bit, but-
You're doing great.
But yeah, I don't know, it just, you know, just, I really appreciate you guys, and I hope that it does continue to progress, and I am somebody who would like to, you know, you know, work off-hands and just do like a little community work with the whole organization if I could. So that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
We've gotten through everyone else on the list, correct? Okay. Hi there. My name is Zach Lynch, and I'm thankful to my friend Laura Lee, who invited me to come here tonight. We are both from the UW School of Social Work, so I'm a social work student, and I'm also a chemical dependency counselor for youth. I just wanted to add, because I feel like it gets left out of these types of conversations sometimes, and not to undermine in any way anything that anyone has said, but I have come through the big money I've been paying to the university to read some really powerful books that poverty and scarcity are manufactured. And I, you know, I've done work in my profession to undo the moral constructions that are normal in our society of addiction, and I've been doing the same for poverty. But, well, I've been hearing so many people talk about fixing situations through the right conditions and hard work. I just wanted to voice that some of our systems are constructed to produce these results, and it's not any sort of failure of character or of a human being that these, that people can find themselves living on the street, and especially where we're at in the development of our social and economic progress, that we're seeing what we're seeing. So I just felt like-
You can say it's capitalism.
Okay.
It's okay to say it. It's okay to say it.
There are a couple other pieces in there too, but that's, you know, that's the big one.
The overarching system that generates that.
Yes, yes. But there are subsystems within that system that are-
Yes, it's not, it's not-
Predatory.
Exactly, yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
Also, the speaker who spoke before you, she wasn't signed up, so if you could find her, just for the record, we need her name. Is anybody, is anybody else wishing to speak who hasn't signed up before I adjourn the hearing? Okay, seeing nobody, raise your hands. Please don't leave yet. Did you want to speak?
I only hope that your voice will change for Seattle, that they keep you on the council. They don't go back to the status quo of having a, it sounds called having a business as usual council, nothing really gets done. So I wish you luck with your upcoming reappointment to council, and I hope you get it.
Please sign up, please. Please sign up. Sorry, sorry, we require you to sign, you've already spoken. Let's talk offline. I know some of you, like Reevee, might want to continue the conversation, so please do, please connect with my staff members, and we can continue the conversation. Just a few closing items before you all leave, so please don't leave just a second. First of all, I wanted to, on behalf of my whole office, thank you all for the testimonials. They were very, very powerful, and they have always been powerful, especially those of you who have personally experienced or are experiencing homelessness, and I've shared your personal stories. It's really, really, it's important for the larger cause, but I also know it's not the easiest thing to do, to share your personal stories, especially from the toughest moment in your life and to share your vulnerabilities. So please know that every time you do that, you strengthen our collective struggle and our movement, and it's very, very valued every single time you do that. I also equally wanted to thank everybody who's been here, not just tonight, but, you know, throughout the years when we've been fighting to address the problem of homelessness, the advisory councils, Cher, Nicholsville, Lehigh, and the students who are working with Lehigh, and the young people who are, who are, you know, experiencing through their own work how valuable of a service this is. All of that is really a big part of why we're doing this. I appreciate everybody's wishes to me and also the thanks that you have given me in my office, but please know that really, the only power that we have through our office is through the collective advocacy. So every time you thank me, you're thanking yourselves and our collective work, because without that, we would not, we would not be here. So in terms of concrete next steps, immediately Tuesday, October 22nd, at 4:30, we urge you all to come and participate in the public hearing, and today also was a public hearing, but it was specifically for tiny house villages. But on Tuesday, we will have, the city council will have a public hearing on the budget as a whole, and there will be, it will be, you know, all the council members will be here. So I really urge those of you who are advocating for the, both the ordinance to expand the ability to cite tiny house villages throughout the city, and advocating for the funds for those tiny house villages to be put in place, please come and advocate for it, because, you know, when you talk about funds, that makes it a budget item. So we need your voices here on the 22nd. Please arrive around 4:30 because that will allow you to sign up earlier. And then my staffers have petitions that, you know, that you can take to your community, fellow community members, other residents, if you're housed, then your neighbors, your coworkers. I think people are starting to realize that tiny house villages actually work. As Imogen was saying, you know, now here we have a solution that actually works, why wouldn't we fund it? So please, if you can take some copies of the petitions from my staff members and bring them signed on Tuesday, or email them to us, or, you know, take a photo with your smartphone and send it to us, either way, just make sure we have those petitions as much as possible because that allows us to continue advocacy. As far as the rest of the council, I'm sure they will be watching this, and I know this will have an impact, and I'm fully confident that we will be able to get this passed, but not without your continuing advocacy. So we will need each and every one of you on Tuesday and also going forward in order to be able to win the funds through the budget in November. And so on Tuesday, 4:30, please come. And I also wanted to thank Ted Verdon, who read the, who read the bill title with such a flourish. Nick Jones and Jonathan Rosenbloom, all of whom are dedicated community organizers and have done a lot of work. And the faith leaders, thank you so much for saying to the society at large that this is a moral question and that there cannot be a neutral ground here. We have to fight for our homeless neighbors because it could happen to you, as Carrie was saying, it could happen to anybody. That's how bad the crisis is right now. I don't know if a single person who has not themselves experienced it or knows somebody who's experienced it, and I think at this point, we know multiple people in our lives who have experienced it. So let's begin to address this crisis. It is not, it's not an act of God, it can be prevented, but we need to generate the political will, and you, your testimonials are a huge reason why we will create that political will. So thank you so much, wish you all a good night, and I'll adjourn the meeting, and I hope to see you on Tuesday.